I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Van...
You're in.
This is Joe.
Here.
All right, here. Any additions or subtractions to today's agenda?
Motion accepted.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any corrections to the obvious of the two minutes? That's fairly short. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. September's schedule. Just talk.
September 14th, yes.
About couple of trainings meeting September 20th?
Yeah. Yeah.
Without motion on that one.
Yeah, does that work for you?
Also, all those in favor, September's schedule?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consider or approve tax evasion.
So Troy Winkle had called about his property and I kind of attacked everything there. It's been on the tax file for a couple of years. 2015 they had a tender of taxes. He plans to tear down the house from the garage and put up a shop first shed there, which is right across the street from Steel Coffee, I believe.
They're gonna tear it all down.
Nobody made it sound he was gonna build a shop but like have enough room so if anybody wanted to build a house or something, uh... Asking if we would assign that certificate over to him. If we wanted to do what we do at the asking, make the penalty and cost and half the taxes or whatever.
Of course, the taxes bring in the actual back taxes, so they have a hard time completely eliminating that and starting a new likely trend going forward. So I guess I would favor making them pass what we've done before. I'm saying each of those instances, it still is like a thousand dollars or so.
As much as I haven't been as many years.
But a thousand dollars be the limit and not a big tax, it's like it's low down.
Could you waive the penalty and just make it pay taxes?
You could do whatever you want.
But that happens with the big property or what they've dealt with is where it'll happen too.
I guess I'd be in favor of it just for the city of America.
And after a while.
What was that?
Has it been empty for a while?
Um, I don't know. When they last, I mean, last taxes were paid in March of 2015. So I don't know. I believe that Sheldon wasn't shopping now.
And nobody bought the tax certificate?
Nope.
Nobody?
Probably not a good sign.
Nobody wanted it?
Yeah, the taxes on them are only, yeah, sixty dollars. Not twenty-two dollars a year.
Well, I think it'd be fair to, since what we've done in the past, I mean, motion to. When they make penalty and costs, they have taxes and sign a tax.
Can you make that tie to them actually tearing the house down? Would anything get better?
Kinda hard to do, kinda. Cause they have, you have to assign it to them so that when they can start the ninety day clock, yeah.
Is that gonna be there?
And it's just maybe likely have a, more likely will proceed taxes coming forward even if he doesn't. But yeah, I would prefer that it goes forward as planned, but.
I'm sure they'll tear it down.
I think so. Does that sound moving?
Yeah. Oh, all those in favor of that tax evasion?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky. To Hawkeye Point House.
Have they given those particular direction?
Well, I, I would like to see it's out of rental business. And I guess in my opinion, that's how it should have went to the Hawk Eye Point. When that all got divvied up, I don't know why, has the county kept the house apart, they run by conservation? But it would make sense since it's all one unit, so they go back to being that way.
I think so. I can see Nick going to save the assets.
Yeah. And then Nick can dispose of it how he sees fit, but.
Well, the code section referencing conservation, maintaining county property refers to anything open to the public. As we're renting it out, private individuals that wouldn't qualify as having to be under jurisdiction of conservation. I'd say.
I would make it open to the public.
A rental house somewhere than.
Yeah, anyway they want to rent, so it has to be open to the public. But it's available to anybody, any town, town's up, whether it's a rental lodge or anything else.
Well, just anybody around the community?
Whatever they wanna do with it. I just hope that it's the auditor's job to be maintaining the rental property, dealing with plumbing and eating and leaking this and leaking that all the time.
But I guess if they wanna tear the house down, they could. What are your thoughts, Nick?
Probably what Mike said would be what my plan would be.
You think it's an old sale?
I haven't been in, I, I have never been in it, actually, as a matter of fact.
You might get a little something like that, you could get a lot, but yeah.
But then you gotta really want everybody keeping it up because it's right next to Hawkeye Point. I would. I mean, to, to move it.
Yeah. I guess that's where the big concern from, I guess, conservation staff comes from, is that Hawkeye Point is the highest point in the state of Iowa. And the amount of people that travel to the highest point in states is, will flabbergast you. Like, it's silly. So I would say Hawkeye Point is probably the busiest park in Oseola County. And it would be nice to have more control over what the entrance to Hawkeye Point looks like.
Yep. Okay. Some of that stuff, that nice little.
That.
I think I don't disagree with this one. I would like to ask the former owners their thoughts to their feelings on it. But we're tired of that, if they were pretty generous with the acquiring of the actual Hawkeye Point and maybe seeing the condition of the house has changed. What they'd like to happen with it or, I guess, before we move on anything, I'd like to hear more from them or at least reach out to them and see, but.
I think we should take it out. Yeah, if you wanna gather a little more info on it, but it, we're not really set up to be a landlord.
Nick is though.
Nick is though.
No, no, I'm not.
Nick is totally set up with that.
I don't, I don't know that there's any difference between the county board supervisors having a house if they run out and the conservation board having a house if they run out at that point.
You got more time, you got bond holders, you can go with it and.
Yeah, still, still no. I like.
You can't, you got any?
No, I, I got blind to it, but.
You could turn it into a little V C on like the Tracy House where you can lock up all the stuff that we probably don't wanna display at my corner trip or something to have it open on holidays or whatever. Just talking about it.
So we, we talked about it a little bit, not last meeting, but you could use the Quonset too.
Yeah, I mean, the Quonset is definitely useful space, absolutely. Like storage buildings are definitely useful space for anybody.
The really, the house she could put up for sale to. The last month, I was in the last month. And he passed me, I don't feel bad.
That's why I lived up, you know, I scrolled through my lives. But I would take a motion to table this together some morning.
And therefore, we can talk around the weekend.
Make sure they come up with some good ideas as well.
I've got it.
Is the motion signed or do we need a second?
We have a motion from somebody. Was that you?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Second, all those in favor, table that until next meeting.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Nick.
Have a good day, Kevin.
Thank you, Nick. Through contract, West Iowa, it's a very significant.
Who's doing that one?
Just the approach with the nonprofits and that actual contract. And part of, part of the past. I have any contact with stuff, Ray Lee's has been involved with that on our behalf and I have, but. Things are continuing to present with L D on their radar at least, so I'll make a motion to approve that contract.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Through contract, Northwest Iowa Regional Housing, Chalk County.
This is kind of Russia's law to, uh, shut not thirteen by fifteen hundred. Yeah. Michelle mentioned that they could go, we told that the state, what percent participation level we have to get to fifteen or nineteen percent. So if that contract indicates that will not exceed what nineteen percent would be.
What, flashlights, like.
First, we gotta do a contract.
Follow our technical flashlights, but the contract of the, uh, not sixteen.
So I would take a motion to approve contract, Northwest Iowa Regional Housing.
What do you have to do?
Store. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Through flashlight, Northwest Iowa Regional Housing, Chalk County.
How would that one score?
All those in favor, do we're doing two flashlights?
Yeah, one at fifteen percent, one at nineteen percent.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Really might be a lot of colleagues wrapped up in that.
You guys, why the county had to pay for, who are paying collection? Where are they at? That's funny, for Sean, I do. Well, that comes to be testing for COVID, president, you got Trump, he thought that was. Not a scream, but it was a collection. Or a test.
I'm guessing in the past, they were getting paid, but in state, there's.
Yeah, there is.
Collection and that came to an end, yeah.
Something that stands out to anybody down there?
Water services in here on twenty-two ninety-six.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All those in favor?
Same.
Motion of the rest of us.
All those in favor, they're in the front row.
Aye, aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That brings us right up to nine o'clock. E M S open house update.
I'll be there. I'll be right back.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
My name is Kevin Miller. I do emergency services at K B four bigger at N two C. Sandy and I and Dan have been working together to talk about different avenues. For the E M S in Oseola County, we just wanted to provide you guys an update as to what's going on. That way you guys are in the loop on everything. So as you guys know, there is an E M S shortage in that area. It's not just Oseola County, I promise you. We're seeing it everywhere on the N two C territories. And there's a couple of different reasons for this. One reason is that we are seeing more of two income households that we haven't seen necessarily in the past. And so we are seeing more people working from that aspect and they're not able to commit the time to the volunteer services. Looking at churches and other volunteer positions, we, we see that effect and especially with COVID going on where we can see that effect in employment right now. And also more responsibilities, Sandy, as the director can attest, that E M S definitely has evolved quite a bit in the last couple of years. I previously was the director of the Sheldon for SCAT. And I can definitely tell you when I joined in twenty fifteen, even from then until now, the responsibilities have definitely evolved as to what we have to do. The reports we have to get into the state, the things that our volunteers have to commit and the time outside taking call that they have to commit to keep up their license. For example, I believe when E M S first started, E M T was only about sixty to ninety hours to take the course. Now it's upwards to a hundred and fifty hours to take the course. So it is a big commitment. We have done many things at N two C to try to pare down that time to make it more marketable to people so they are able to take that course. On the fire side, we're seeing the same situation in recent years. They recently up that to a hundred and fifty hours as well. So it is comparable between getting your firefighter and also getting your E M T. So I wanted to talk about what is N two C doing to help with some of the shortages. One of the things that we are doing is outreach classes. I see that all of you receive a flyer. And one of the things that we are looking at is knowing the communities hosting the classes right there. One of the things that we've heard from feedback from services as well as citizens is that they don't wanna always drive to Sheldon and they don't have that time commitment to always get to Sheldon. Also, the clinical sites that we have available, they want them more local. And so by having that reach class in Sibley in Oseola County, we are hoping that draws in more people from Oseola County to take the course. This course that we're looking at is more of a hybrid course. And what that consists of is that consists of online coursework and then you would have multiple Saturdays throughout the course to get all of your skills done. What this allows, it allows them to spend more time focusing on the diagnostic portion on their own, kind of at their own pace. And then when they go into the steel Saturdays, you're able to hammer those out. That way they can get the course done in a shorter amount of time. Generally, when I first started the face-to-face course in Sheldon, which was from September until May. Currently with the hybrid, we can get it done in a semester. So we are looking at a couple of different options, but more than likely we'll start in December-ish. That way we can avoid harvest and planting, right, in the agricultural area. And then also probably get done somewhere around March or April. So it can accommodate many different schedules that we know that are out there. The other things that we're doing is recruitment. We are doing things such as sending out flyers. We're working with N two C marketing team, reaching out to other marketing teams. I know we've been contracted to economic development in Oseola County to try different ways to market people as well. A meeting that Sandy and Dan and I have is with the high school. I'm looking at potentially tapping into that resource. Because we wanna get people interested in E M S. Some people think it's just a volunteer position, but we know that there's many career opportunities out there as well. And we know based on statistics that a lot of people either come back to their hometown eventually to help serve in those capacities. And so we wanna tap early in to their career opportunities for that. The other thing that we have going is an R N to E M T class. So in the past, R Ns generally either had to take the full E M T course or they could get signed off by the medical director to take an E M T, to sign off as an E M T. One thing that we've heard from a lot of service directors is that they would like a more formalized course to help those nurses feel more comfortable out on the ambulance. Because the fact of the matter is, is that E M S is a little bit different than in the E R setting where things are a little more controlled. And so we wanna give them the skill sets and know how to use our tools on the ambulance before they're just thrown out on a call. So we do have an R N to E M T class and we are actually hosting one in Sheldon in October. I'm gonna be giving somebody that flyer, but we're also open to the idea of hosting it in Oseola County as well, should we get enough people to run that class. The other exciting thing that we are doing, you know, for the, to any county, any service, is open houses. Sandy reached out to me and we kind of talked about it. So we are having an open house in Sibley, Oseola County, and that will be on nine eleven. And it will start at noon. We will be having a food truck hosted from noon to two that day for people to come out. Tours at ambulance, garage tours at ambulances, meet and greet with some of the members. We will then have a joint extrication with Sibley Fire as well as Oseola E M S. That will start at one to one thirty and then we will have an info session, excuse me, talking about some of the classes from two to three. I'll also have a booth set up there to give people who can't make the info sessions some information. Just wanted to fully learn what other services are doing to capture some of the shortages. I don't endorse any of these. These are just some ideas that I've heard of. And so some people are doing non-traditional benefits. So instead of the general, we're gonna pay you to be on call, we're going to give you health insurance, those kinds of benefits. They're actually taking a non-traditional approach. So sometimes they're waiving some fees through the communities or the counties. But they're also looking at, if they have a municipal utilities, I'm looking at some of those items. They're also looking at potentially gift cards or tickets to things, free admissions to county fairs. Those are just some of the non-traditional ideas that I've heard of out there. They've also taken significant investment in the E M S services with equipment, ambulances and buildings. Recently, COVID money definitely has come in, so we're seeing more infrastructure being put into E M S in different communities. With that, as far as equipment goes and then as well as buying new ambulances, it seems like a lot of services are doing that right now. As well as a couple of communities are actually building new buildings. I know for example, Pulpit, they're looking at a new fire station. So just interesting things going on in our area with that. Another thing people are doing, excuse me, is staffing with older part-time people. They're noticing that the volunteer rates are going down and so they're noticing that they can staff with older part-time people. Not necessarily just in E M S, but they're having joint positions, whether it be with maintenance crew or whether it be with city or county staff, filling those call shifts as well. And then also, I'm sure you guys have already heard of the levy that was passed making E M S an essential service. That's, that's definitely an option. It sounds like there's some hoops that you have to jump through to build a board and all that. I'm sure you guys know more about that than I do. So just wanted to put that out there. And then also word of mouth. I know that Sandy said you guys show good support to E M S. So as much as you guys can get information out there that we need volunteers, a lot of these towns are running with only one to two people. And that's terrifying, like E M S provider, because we know that many definitely can count. So I'm gonna turn it over to Sandy and she can give me more logistics about the numbers themselves. And do you have anything else to add up or anything?
No.
Okay.
Well, when I was talking to Kevin, he said that one thing was to just give you guys a brief overview of what we're doing. Right now we have ten people. Two of them live out of town, so they can only be there from eight to four. We have ten people that run that ambulance service twenty-four seven. And that is, and on the average, on the average, on a monthly average, they go between the hundred and fifty to three hundred plus hours a month that they put in on that ambulance service. So they are, they're busting their ass to keep a service here in our county. Sorry. Anyway, so about the average call.
Well, that'll be the headline.
So what is, an average call takes about an hour and a half to two hours. It may depend a lot on, excuse me, the hospital that we go to. We get over to Ochetan and there's a lot of, are, there's a lot of people over in Ochetan that choose to, you know, either go to Worthington or Lake Regional. And we usually, we usually try to accommodate that if, if, you know, in a stable condition. If they are in an unstable condition, then we have to take them to the nearest hospital. That is, that is the Iowa, that's the law. That's it. That's the rules of the game. So anyway, the average call is we've seen in about an hour and a half to two hours. And that means coming back, writing their report, recycling, everything. The transfers to Tubal is about three and a half of them. We don't always go to Tubal. We're saying our transfers anywhere from Omaha to Rochester, you know, any place that they have a bed that's available, we can, we're just taking them off. So in twenty nineteen, we had six hundred and one calls to El Cajon County. And that was four hundred and fifty of them were nine-one-one calls. We had a hundred and thirty-two transfers. And that was all over from, you know, the University of Minnesota, to Omaha, Compton, all over the place. Twenty twenty, we got hit pretty hard. Nobody wanted to go to the hospital. But we still ended up with about three hundred and fifty-nine-one-one calls and about ninety-nine transfers. But again, our numbers were down to like four hundred and fifty-seven calls. But twenty twenty, twenty, or right now as of, you know, August, we're at three hundred and sixty-five calls. So we've been doing pretty good, I guess, with probably a little over four, five hundred by the time the end of the year shows up. So we are talking like what can we do, I mean, you know, asking for additional funding, you know, for, to help students. But personally, what I have found is that that student needs to invest something. And I know they're investing their time, but it seems like sometimes if they have to do a financial investment, they're more, they're more prone to sit down on their part of the computer and finish it because it's their money.
What does the, what does it normally cost?
It's fifteen hundred dollars and then probably an additional about hundred fifty to two hundred for certification. Cause right now you have to be, you have to pass a, you know, they do a background check on you, they fingerprint you. And so it's, it's quite a bit of money invested. You know, if you're looking at eighteen hundred dollars, you know. In the past, we have, and what they, in the past, we make them pay for it upfront and then we reimburse them for all their costs, all their shots that they have to have. Because they do a T V shot, they do a test type of B shot. And so we've reimbursed all that, all their, all their costs. And so we've reimbursed all that, all their, all their costs. Again, we can, you know, when I took it back in nineteen ninety-eight, you know, the cost of the class was three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And so the county paid for it. But I did sign a contract that said that if I did not pay it back, you know, or did not pass, then I would have to pay the whole amount back to them. And that seemed to work out okay too. But I know we just, about eighteen hundred dollars is a big call. It really is. So for, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what we can do. I know we need to take care of the people that we have because, I mean, their, their tanks are running empty. But we need to show that we really appreciate them. And they're, they're worth more than a dollar thirty-five an hour to be on call. So I guess, you know, I'll have to kind of count out the numbers and then do like a separate meeting with the board and try to see if we can increase some of that. You know, maybe possibly, again, I like some of those ideas, Kevin, about, you know, investing them. Maybe making them part-time employees and offering them different incentives to stay. The one part that we are lacking of is during the day, I think, is, is the hardest, hardest covering that. You can get people to take the course, but then they have regular jobs during, you know, during the day. So they're around at night, but, you know, some of them have families. So there's church and there's after-school programs and they're busy too. So, but during the day is, I think, isn't that pretty much correct? And our days, our day shift are, you know, and, and we do, we have a great support staff in those other towns. I mean, if it wasn't for, you know, for the people that are, that live in Malton and in Ochita and, and they see, you know, they go to that scene, they, they pack each other, they get, you know, they get that first set of vitals, they get one oxygen, whatever they need to. And so that's really been helpful. But they're not always around either. I mean, a couple of them are farmers and, you know, fieldwork is going to come up here pretty soon. And that's their bread and butter right there. So you can't expect them to drop their field work to come and help us. So I, I'm saying, I don't know really what, I honestly don't know what more we can do. I mean, I'm really hoping, we have two people that are really interested right now that are going to take the course. But again, they work during the day. They're, they're not, they're not, they're not someone we can utilize and have it at night.
Was there any consideration on grandfathering in, past?
Yeah.
EMT people that look at and go through all the courses? I mean, that, that possibly could cover your, your daytime.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, for instance, like Brad and I or something like that. I'm not saying to even do it, but I'm just, keep retired now, even, you know, so be able to be there.
You know.
Is that about all state rules or is that, is that something you can sidestep? As far as, you know, and as far as continuing, yeah, don't people like, you know?
Because first responders can do just, right now, can do pretty much a lot of the things that, that, you know, they can put on oxygen, they can do that.
The thing that you guys get about that.
Yeah, about having.
And not having to go through all that.
Oh, and not having.
I don't think that's an option.
Yeah, yeah. So that comes through the state rules. So with the way the credentials work, if they test up their EMT, then they.
I understand that because I've lost quite a long time to it.
But yeah, with EMT, like they couldn't just wait the class.
You're shaking your head, what do we have to do to get, get to that point? I mean, there's people out there that are really good at it, that just were tired of it, that might, might step in on a temporary basis, you know. You're shaking your head, no, that ain't gonna happen. But what do we have to do to coordinate them? Because pretty soon, we won't have, we won't have anybody anymore. And that's, then we're going to, you know.
I, I also, I also think, you know, what, I'm not, play devil's advocate a little bit. We also have to look at the skill sets though, because definitely the skill practices change over the years. And so there definitely would be an additional education that they would have to maintain for that.
But the full, the full course, you'd think there should be a short. At one time, when I first got on, I don't know if you can go through on, Randy Benz had, had been an EMT, quit. And then they, they grandfathered him and his wife back in. And I don't know what they had to go through.
They did something like that. I remember that.
Yeah.
They.
And I'm not even saying the people that quit would want to, but they might do it in a, in a daytime setting from, you know, eight to five or whatever, you know, in the morning to not be on call weekends or something like that.
I will definitely.
You gotta start someplace. You all go, well, what are we going to do? There's nothing else we can do. Well, maybe there is something else we can do. I don't.
Yeah, I'll definitely reach out to the state to see if there's an option available for that. I do know what you're talking about. It was generally during the time where they did grandfather those that expired and we let them come back in as EMT. So I'll see if there's still something available for that, not even that.
You know, I, I actually quit when I went to renew. And it was, it was a three-hour deal and computer, trying to renew on the computer. And I pulled the computer, I says, I'm done. I'm not, I'm not doing it. I'm not going to go through this. I'm not a computer person, I don't like computers. And that's probably the biggest reason I quit, you know. So I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm just saying, I mean, if you don't ask, if you don't push.
It's not like they're very strict.
If we don't push for something like that, you know, there's a lot of good people out there that quit. That, that I understand they have to keep their skill sets up. But you know, I took the course, it was load and go. You know, get them, get them on the pod, get them in the ambulance, get them to the hospital. We're not doctors, you know, and that's basically what you have to do. Anyway, just an idea.
Yeah, it's definitely not that way anymore.
Yeah, it's too bad, but, but there's no really control on a local level on what we often require.
No.
National or revenue from EMT and then the state.
Because, because EMS is actually considered a career. And there are multiple, you know, hospitals and private services that hire them. And they, you know, you charge for those calls. And they are expensive and that person in the back definitely, or the person that's standing above you needs to know what it's going to take to keep you alive.
But also, I can, I can attest to the, the, the fact that EMS has improved over the years. Because if it was still just load and go, I, I probably wouldn't be sitting here right now with the, because of the EMTs that responded to me, just my personal level, you know, with the training they had and all that. That's the only reason I'm here. And that's what the state is looking at, especially these rural, rural counties, you know. When you get way out there to, you know, the other side of Ochita and you got to haul them a fifteen, twenty-minute ride to the hospital. But people in the back of that ambulance, that better know some stuff to keep them, keep that heart pumping, keep them alive until they get to the hospital, you know. That's just, I think that's the state, what the state's trying to do is saying that this person in Sibley, Iowa, has the same level of care as this person sitting in Des Moines, Iowa. You know, that's the whole goal. I think that's why the EMS courses have gotten more, you know, hardened to take.
I like the idea with the RIs.
Yes.
I like that idea.
And we have one for sure.
Absolutely. The other thing that I did forget to mention, Sandy mentioned it a little bit, is the EMR course. Emergency Medical Responder. And so with that course, they, an EMR is not allowed to transport by themselves. They have to have an EMT. And so we are looking at having a dual course with our EMT course. So if someone wanted to become just an EMR, where they wouldn't transport necessarily, that would be an option. And that course is generally shorter with their skill sets, so.
And that's very, what I was thinking, you know, with like Brad and some of the EMTs over in your area that has let it go and then they're retired. I mean, maybe all it would take is to just do a, a course that they can challenge the EMR course. You know, maybe it's a twenty-four hour, you know, refresher and then they can challenge that EMR course. Because they, they're then an EMT, so they do have some of that knowledge, you know.
Start from this with the EMR, what is that?
Emergency Medical Responder.
There, you have to have an EMT, at least an EMT in the back to transport. We do encourage ours, and we have first responders in Ochita. And they take their ambulance to the scene. They're able to do vitals, put on oxygen, they can do CPR. We've given them a lot of the great tools. There's certain things that they cannot do. They cannot put like a blind oral injection.
Yeah. Medication.
Yeah, there's certain medications that they're not allowed to. But they can stabilize that person long enough for us to come and help them.
Absolutely. Very good. Do you have any other?
No, I'm leaving.
I. Do you have any other?
Absolutely.
Do you guys have any other further questions regarding Sandy, Dan and I?
Do any of the other hospitals house the ambulances and stuff there?
Good question. So in our area, we would have Orange City Hospital that is hospital-based. So they do house, but if they're not owned by the hospital, they do not house ambulances. That was a conversation that we had with the hospital was potentially if someone from the outside wanted to stay at the hospital, could they at least stay there? And their response was they don't have enough for that, so. Good question.
Does the college working towards supporting counties that want to give EMS the essential service designation? It's not just a thing where we say, we have designated this.
Yeah.
Like you said, it's more involved in that as far as educating public or supporting the process to get that whole passed, to get that designation placed on the surfaces. Is there anything that works, is the, the college supporting that effort?
Sure. So I know that I sent initially when the levy was going to the state. I know I sent things to our college in support of it. And I know that they reached out to legislation. So I don't think there would be any dependency to help assist in whatever way you can. But I would definitely have to run that through our administration first, which is a good question.
Do the hospitals around here do own ambulances?
You do have Orange City, Spencer, We're Living Ten, Lakes Regional. And I believe that's our closest one down to an ambulance. Um.
Is there an option?
So how many people do you think it would take to run? I mean, do you have any kind of.
To run a class?
To, no, to run a service. But, I mean, like what were the numbers over in Sheldon or, you know, how many hours a month did any of those EMTs work?
Good question. We have about twenty-four. No, we have about twenty-four hour ambulance. But the thing is, is that we know that everyone has different schedules. And so sometimes it can be difficult. We might have twenty-four, but maybe only ten of them take the majority of the call. And we were in the same boat daytime shifts, we struggled. Luckily, we had some dedicated people that were either able to leave work or they were retired, which is another reason why we really want to encourage employers. If they do have EMS providers, to at least allow them to leave to respond to the call. Not necessarily they might have to transport, but to respond to that call. And we're working on that with Sandy, so. Other questions?
But your, your service, Sheldon is ran by the city.
That's correct.
Okay.
City of Sheldon.
And then their county just didn't money or how is that?
Good question. So O'Brien County, they have some training funds. So they'll reimburse all training expenses for this service. They also put in seventy-five hundred every year to every single service to acquire a new ambulance. And then they also have money available for PPE. And then they also have some like grant money available. I don't want to say grants, that's what it's called. But they have some money available. So for example, Sheldon applied for fifteen thousand dollars to hire part-time people. And that's what they elected that one for. Good question.
So consistent levy for EMS or only counties with that new legislation?
Well, only counties.
Only counties.
I think that.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Other questions? Well, thank you guys for listening to us. If you have anything, I'll leave my business card here. Feel free to email me if you have any other further questions. I will get back to you guys on that transition course as well as looking at the levy. What college can they help you guys?
Thank you guys. Thanks. This thing, that was more than two there.
More than sixty-four.
Hell, yeah.
Okay. Well, I've got one more last email that people today about that.
Nine thirty. Jack?
What, ready, whatever you have?
All right. Well, good morning. I'm Ben David, CEO of Children's Health Center. Molly?
Yep, community director at Bright Beginning.
And we are here today, we wanted to give you an overview and of course, the information. I hope you all have that was sent to you yesterday. So thanks to the others for providing that to you. Just an overview of who Bright Beginning is and why they were originally put, why there is a daycare facility there. The first page goes through information of, you know, the children that we serve, the ratios that we, we are, that we follow, which are our requirements, some of the staffing things, and then some of the issues that we face. There is financials which we'll get to, but I do, I want to start with the original agreement, the assistance agreement for Early Childhood Care Center, known as Bright Beginning in Ochilla County. So in, this was dated two thousand and three, the city Sibley, the county, the hospital and the school came together to build Bright Beginning in Ochilla County. So the four of us got together, I think we needed a daycare facility for, for the county. And so there is information here related to each of those, the purpose. And there is an area specific to the county. So originally, assistance for the site preparation and subject approval. And was the rural development and the Department of Economic Development on an in-kind basis. They have fifteen and twenty-five thousand for the project. There's also financial contributions of two thousand per year for five years. And again, this, this contract and agreement is still active. However, all of the county's obligations are, have been fulfilled. So I do want you to be aware that we're, this, we're asking. We're not saying that you're obligated to do something today. So going back, this is how Bright Beginning originally came about. And so I want to bring this back to our, the financials. This is going to be the third page. This is where we've been over the last nine years. Ochilla Community Hospital, which is our, same again, is a nonprofit organization, has been subsidizing Bright Beginning for at least the last. has been subsidizing Bright Beginnings for at least the last nine years. That's the, that's what we have. And so, um, you can see it, it has, um, the loss has increased over, over the past couple of years. And so, um, it's just unsustainable for us to continue to, to subsidize at that rate. Um, so there's a couple of options for us is, um, increasing rates, which we did. And, uh, yesterday, we increased it by approximately twelve percent. That has pushed, uh, a few people out of daycare and are now staying home. So they're unable to work. And so our, as you know, our unemployment rate is, uh, below three percent. And so that is concerning for, for us, even, even as a, as a hospital. We did lose at least one employee. Um, but again, we have to, we have to do what's right for the daycare staff, and we have to make this very even. So that's what we're trying to do, is trying to make this very even. So since this time, uh, we've had communications with parents at, at Bright Beginnings and have asked them to, to do some fundraising, uh, to reduce, uh, additional increases because we do believe up to increase by another, uh, five to ten percent in January. Uh, which again may push out more, more parents than we did, uh, just because of the costs. So, uh, we have gone to the city of Sidley and they have committed to ten thousand dollars, uh, this year. Um, and so we would ask that the board supervisors up at the county also commit to ten thousand dollars this year to help alleviate the, the increases for parents. I did, uh, receive a call, um, from a supervisor and it's just, I think, I want you to be aware that, um, our communication with parents remember that the, the board is required to, to support Bright Beginnings. They're not required to, there's no agreement, but we have a place that requires you, but we were, we were asked for your support.
Good question. Okay. Um, the meeting you had with the parents elicited a lot of phone calls to a lot of us. And one of the things that kept coming through over and over was, I don't know how you pitched it or proposed it, but somehow the county was responsible, it was, we were responsible for your current financial issues. So would you like to elaborate on that? To explain how does exactly we contributed to your current financial situation?
You, you did not.
That's, that's what came across to the parents, and I've, I've kinda had a loss as to how to explain it to them.
Well, I think it's, it's fairly simple is that the Bright Beginnings has not asked you for support in the past. So you can't fund Bright Beginnings if you haven't been asked.
Well, we weren't asked until about twenty eighteen, and then people quit coming to ask. So I don't know why, if you were still a boss every year, that nobody came up here to ask for any financial assistance for daycare. So it's not like you were turned down, you, you never approached us about it. And I don't know if something got lost in the translation there between Janet retiring and you taking over, that nobody came back up here anymore.
Yeah, we did have, we had some turnover, um, in our director position, so, you know, I believe that's what happened.
To the, the daycare director never came up, it was just the hospital.
Okay.
So when Janet came up here all the time to request assistance, you know, she brought all the information that they were gonna use some money for and whatever. But, you know, I, I don't see anything like that here. There's a lot of information.
We've got representation on the board throughout the entirety of this, so.
Yep.
I need to be an equal player in this.
We should, we, I'm, I'm not talking about that, but, but there's a lot of information missing. And I don't remember seeing any reports or audits or anything from Bright Beginnings showing your expenses or how much this money got spent. I don't know how much money you bring in, grant money every year. I don't know how much your labor costs are. Um, I do know that you guys haven't asked for any preschool scholarships for over the last almost three years for early childhood at Iowa to assist families that can't afford to pay for daycare. Why that is, I don't know. I mean, it's a service that's out there, it's provided to all four counties. And then for whatever reason, you guys quit asking for money from that too.
Sure. So, um, yeah, I mean, that's certainly something that we tend to, I'm, I'm, I wasn't aware of, for scholarships, but that's something that we tend to hear.
You, you used to, but then you quit, so I don't know, I don't know what happened there.
Well, I, I.
When you're talking about parents quitting and pulling their kids out of the, out of the daycare, when there is preschool scholarship money available to assist those people that meet that fiscal requirement to get the money, I, I just don't know why you're not taking advantage of that to help those people get that assistance.
Well, I think, I think, again, in, we had turnover in our director position. And again, I'm, I'm not managing the, the daycare. So yes, I'm sure there's things that we're, we're not doing yet that we need to do.
But the box got stopped some, you know?
Yeah, true.
Somebody's in charge of that, you know, over there. And I, I, I don't see anywhere in here like how much outstanding you guys are owed either. That was another thing that was brought up by a lot of the parents that called. Do you know what that number is?
Outstanding as far as?
People not paying their bills over the daycare.
Everyone pays their bills, we don't have to manage it all.
Okay.
So.
Um, what'd you guys do with your P P P money? Or do you know how much you got from the daycare?
So because Bright Beginnings is a, a department at the hospital technically, from an outstanding point, um, it wa, it came total to the hospital. And again, this is, that was, that's one year.
Well, percent did you owe a lot to the daycare out of that?
Well, I'd have to look.
The daycare got somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred thousand or something.
Correct.
Um, there goes to a D H S grant, that's available to you guys, started in March twenty-one, and ends this August of twenty-one, which is five thousand dollars. Like, you guys are gonna get that. And I don't see that reflected in any of this information here. That was an extra thirty thousand dollars you guys got that you weren't gonna get if it wasn't for COVID. Something like, I don't know how that impacted stuff. I, I need more information.
True.
As to what you guys got going on with this, cause like a lot of nonprofits that come here that ask for financial assistance, bring all that information up quick, we get a report from Oklahoma County that have a lot of information in it as well. But I, I, the parents have a lot of questions. And I also have a lot of questions, this, this doesn't, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. How you made money one year and then the next year the expenses really didn't go up that much, and then you lost money. And I don't, I don't know what all your expenses are type of labor, or just ask where they're all at, but.
Yeah, so it's certainly if, if, you know, it's, um, you know, Leroy attends our, our, our child care advisory board meeting. Is that something that you would like to attend as well?
We only have so many of us there, then we can't afford.
I'm with you. Um, so what information can I, can, can we provide to you with that?
Well, where do you have your budget lost? Is this revenue, is it, what expenses? You know, is it, is it all labor, like in sets, or are you, you know? Because I, like, we're, I don't, gee, you're showing loss, but I don't know where you're, where you're losing that money. Where, where are you losing that money?
Uh, well, labor, labor and benefits. And we could, we can provide you with that information if you want more detailed information, which we do at our advisory board meeting.
When is where I've seen you guys have raised your rates?
Uh, that would be two thousand, uh, nineteen. Uh, due to COVID, we did not raise rates in two thousand and four.
Did you have lots of kids in twelve?
We've always been full. We've always had waiting lists for, whatever, our service rate.
Um, about thirty, thirty.
Every family?
Thirty families, you know, seven multiple kids in one family.
Well, another issue that was mentioned with this as well was the, having to schedule a month in a family. That seems like an awful lot, from talking to the other daycare providers around here. People with small kids really can't book out a month in a family for their calendar. I understand two weeks, but a month is, that's asking a lot of the parents. And then I know the vacation day thing came up as well. Um, I felt like Bright Beginnings, when he was younger, um, making it use it all in one block for a week instead of being able to use it when you have holiday in the middle of the week, doesn't really work with the parents. And some of the hack kids over there, that's not a real flexible arrangement because a lot of the other daycares do allow you to use those one at a time instead of having to use five in a row. So I don't.
I'm sure it's a lot easier to set up that with a little help. And you gotta have so many.
I've heard a board meeting is a great place to address these things. That's what, that's where that needs to be addressed. They're coming with a request that I don't find unreasonable, but I don't know that I'm ready to jump on right now. Just looking through the agreement, you know, if you prepare a budget and present it to us by September thirtieth and show where you'd like us to be an annual partner or something like that, seems more in line with it. But then I have trouble with our budgeting cycle and hitting September thirtieth. Well, what will they be asking us for? With, I don't want that to be streamlined here, all true at all. We're considering those donations, do that partnership in January in advance of, you know, preparing our conference in March. But as far as, yeah, they're, they're great suggestions to make, so I don't see why we're pointing one finger in one direction because in here at all places, but we should be doing scholarships for children who qualify. Do not qualify for Head Start, subject to meaning applicable qualifications. We should provide a power of money. I don't know that we've done any of that. So if we're saying you need to do it, you need to.
You, you have to request it. We wouldn't have any of that information.
We have a twenty-eighty agreement right here that says this is what we as a county are going to do in support of.
But you have to provide it.
We have not been doing it.
You have to provide it.
Let's do what we can.
I know, James.
To work together versus saying, you have to do this, you have to do this.
Do you, I, do you know that the county kids over there didn't qualify for Head Start? I don't, and I wouldn't know unless they told me.
So like, everybody talking about Head Start or preschool?
Whatever's in, well, that's a Head Start in the agreement, maybe that needs to be.
The county says that we will have scholarships available for children who do not qualify for Head Start, subject to meaning applicable qualifications and available funding.
And we can't do that if you don't tell me how many kids you have that don't qualify. We wouldn't know that.
True.
We could have an algorithm set aside for it.
Yeah, we're not even doing our end of what we could be doing, I'm just saying, let's, let's look at all the approaches here rather than saying they need to do all this.
I, I would do our part here. I do want to go back and, and we, we, so over the last six months, we've been working with First Children's Finance, um, out of, out of Des Moines, who, who looks at daycare facilities and makes recommendations. So all the recommendations, things that we've implemented were based on recommendations from a third party to make Bright Beginnings very even. So the, the holidays, all of those changes were saying, hey, we need to get to a very even. Either the thing that we have to do is to get there. And so, yeah, all of, all of the, the changes, yes, they're difficult for parents, but they're also hard for you to be able to pay your staff. You know, how, how are we gonna continue to, to, to give increases and retain staff? We don't have the budget to do that.
Does your staff get increased?
They do not, they do not.
They get health benefits?
They get health benefits. They have the same benefits as, as all hospital employees.
But like, I know daycare, a lot of these other small communities probably are not coming with benefits.
Correct, and that's, that is the big difference here. Um, you know, and again, we could go down the route where we move Bright Beginnings from, from a hospital department from, to a separate entity, and we're still getting benefits away. Our board and the advisory board have been reluctant to do that because if we take the benefits away with like current, um, employment rate, then we won't have employees. So, you know, I think we're trying to balance, it's not perfect, you know, it's, it's, it's a battle. So we're, we're doing what we can with what we have. But I think the recommendations of looking into these things, um, we need to do.
I just, I need a little bit more information. You know, like, I think I know what they got, did me out for that P P P money, maybe they didn't get any. I don't know how the hospital split that up. Cause that would have helped a sum of whatever losses you had for twenty to COVID. So that shouldn't, that number shouldn't look like that if you got your loss. Cause I know there were other daycare providers in the area that got pretty happy chiller for the daycares. And I don't, I said, I don't see that reflected here, I don't see the grant money reflected here. And there is a lot of other opportunities for you guys to get grant money outside of coming to the businesses around the city that you, you should utilize. But I don't know what you're bringing in from here. Not that's necessary.
Yeah, but that all takes time to get that worked out. What we want to do is try and fix something for right now, as it may take here to get it figured out. How long do you think it's gonna take then to, I mean, the city is standing, just saying we give ten. Um, the fundraising, um, what, what, what figure are you looking at? Are you looking at a?
Um, we estimate a fifty thousand.
So if they can get a point?
Then we won't, then we won't have to increase again in January. And then again, we're gonna continue to evaluate all of these changes. Hopefully, hopefully we'll get to a point where we will have to increase rates. But if it, if we continue to increase rates, we're just gonna keep pushing more and more people out of childcare.
Well, I'm all, I'm all favor health of, I have a vested interest in it. I should probably have been talking, but I haven't been anyway, all you, uh, two grand kids in there. Um, but we need to do something, but we also need to, um, sharpen our pencils. That's, that's the work for it, and see, see where we can do some, some savings or some cuts or, you know, we need to help this community. We, we gave, we gave tech, you know, the tech projects and this, like, to keep, to, to get businesses in this town. Well, I have a young guy say to me, well, he says, we ain't got good daycare in, in this town. He says, we're not gonna be able to afford daycare. We, we need to work hard at it, okay? I kinda agree with that, but like, I'm willing to work for it.
I think it would have been better if I would have gradual increases back the few years instead of now, all of a sudden. You know, I wish it had been like that way before this.
Yeah, gradual increases are a lot easier to swallow at a huge amount of twenty percent.
Yeah, I would have just had very many.
Well, I, I agree, I, I, it's just, you know, I, I don't, I don't believe that, you know, the hospital can continue to do this. Um, continue to this. And again, there, there are probably things that we have missed, um, over the years with three different daycare directors. All they've been here for four months, and she doesn't have time to write grants. She needs to run the facility. They're, they're bare bones. So I don't know who is, who's writing the grants and all these things, but we don't have staff sitting around to do those kinds of things. So if we, if there are people that could help with that, we would love to, to, to have those, those people help out.
Well, if you'd reach out to the E C I director, they can assist you with some of that stuff. And I know they did reach out to you guys twice now to come pick up preschool backpacks. And nobody showed up for the last two pickups, and I think she is preparing them up here for you now.
Yeah, I got them halfway there.
Nine, three, almost.
Yeah, yep.
Those are all preschool kids, right?
Yeah, she's a zero to five.
Yeah. So it's like, when they, I mean, the stuff's all out there, but you have to reach out to those agencies to assist you with that. And then, you know, if you could come up with all the other financial questions I have, um, I probably don't know how many kids you have that don't qualify for Head Start yet.
We, we don't manage the Head Start program, so.
So that's not part of Bright Beginnings.
We just lease space to the Head Start program, to open the one.
So that has no bearing on your financials whatsoever, the Head Start stuff?
No, no, other than the rent that they pay for.
They pay two spots in the Head Start room for two of our kids.
Okay.
The two spots are built. Cause two spots are built.
So that obligation, Jason, you'd have to talk to somebody over at the school about the Head Start programs that you really just got to do it right.
Well, cause I read this. It says that we would have a scholarship to support parents that want to have their kids at right beginnings. If they don't qualify for Head Start, they would be available for the scholarship. So.
These guys don't have any idea of what that number is, so I don't know who you get that from. Or if there's even kids that don't qualify.
So, but my point is when someone's coming in and wants to shop for their child, if they're native aware of a scholarship availability through the county, they could utilize that if they don't qualify for Head Start, they would be available. We don't even have those funds set aside to do that. So let's look at ways that we can do more to help this facility besides just create your two thousand dollars. Let's avoid that increase again. Or let's throw a dollar much at it every year.
What is the?
Let's go through what we've got already identified.
What's the empowerment money for this stuff?
Without any, look, I'm not familiar with it.
Hi, thought a minute. With our strategic planning work we've been doing, a lot of it is about identifying resources to support existing providers and also to help create spaces. So that's part of the strategic plan will be laid out a week from today. A lot of that is roping in ECI, extension office, childcare referral. We're gonna have representatives from all of those at the meetings on August thirty first. A lot of that is, I mean, I, I can't keep up with every grant out there. I try. But, you know, it's also about trying to figure out all the different pieces of puzzle and help support going forward. And so it's very possible that things get missed all the time. It's just trying to figure it out. Because there's changeover and websites don't have updated info. So that's part of what we're trying to do is get those resources really identified and make sure that people that, because I, I mean, i- individually, we're not gonna know who, who would qualify for things. Just like low income housing trust, I don't, I can't assume someone's income level. So that's all part of what we've been talking about as well.
Now, and I, do you know how many in-home daycares we have in the county here?
I think there's maybe six that I know about and I'm still working through that. I found out about someone in Ashton that I think has done it, but maybe does more foster care. I know there's one in Harris. So that's part of our plan too, is working out who those people are to reach out and find out, can we help? Is there more we can do to support wider? Because we can't leave those spaces too. So I, I would have to look, but I think there's six or seven. There's not a lot.
Is there actually?
I haven't, not that, one person's just starting and she's trying to get licensed starting by September first. So, cause the one they had, they're closed down, the tiny house. So that's part of the two is, I mean, I'm asking auditor's office, like, do you guys know? You know, how do you know? It's not on the state senate site.
And if they're, and if they're unlicensed?
Right.
Do there's no tracking mechanism?
Yeah. So this is all part of all the work we've been trying to do in this during group.
Well, I know there's a problem we can't fix overnight, but I've got a promotion that we do need ten thousand. And then work on, work on a plan to try to help fix it.
I'd like a little more information before we, yeah. I feel like you don't see.
I would say we're gonna get the information after we do this.
Yeah.
Cause if we're, that's why we need to, you know.
Yeah, I'd say it's a problem. We can't fix overnight.
Those efforts wanting to try to obtain that fifty thousand so that they don't have an increase in January. But that doesn't address that we need for increase. And that increase needs to be there to support ongoing.
Yeah.
So it's expensive. So then it just doubles the increase next year, doesn't it? It can, maybe with the, with the rates next year and you're gonna likely have an annual increase anyway, so.
So I think all the things that, you know, I talked about, looking into programs, the grants, those are things that we can try put in place, as Stephanie said, over the next year. But that's gonna take a long time to get all that information. And so hopefully Holly's doing a great job of managing expenses and staff, um, getting, just getting staff in there. So I think we're in a good place now, but at the same time, we don't know, um, you know, the, the analysis that we need to increase by about twenty-five percent and changing structure wholly, we, we took some of that down so we didn't have such a huge effect on, on the parents and kids. So we don't know what it's gonna look like from year to year. But again, that's why we have, um, you know, the advisory board to make those decisions and make recommendations for changes. Um, that includes somebody from the county, city, school district, parents, um, and, and the hospital.
Do you have a ballpark on what your increase now? How much that creates and how much that will reduce your deficits?
The twelve percent?
Yeah.
Um, the twelve percent, I have to go.
It should be over fifty thousand.
Well, so you have to know. So I think the, the information that we have here is, um, there's some funding which you, you want more information. There's some funding that, um, that, um, got to the net of fifty-seven thousand. So there's some funding in there that we're not expecting for next year.
And, and you, you're just gonna stay off the, cause you just, you gotta have the rate rate. Cause your labor cost, that's the majority of your expenses are gonna go off every year. So is your benefit, that's just like it doesn't account? So I, I don't.
We'll have to raise rates, but we won't have to raise rates by another ten percent. We'll have to raise rates by four, you know, three to, three to four, three to five percent.
But we're just contributing to fixing a back deficit. I mean, it's not really fixing the problem going forward.
But if there's, there's ability to give grants, if there's opportunities that we can, we can look at. And, you know, the, the government talked a little bit about some things that they're doing from the state level that may, may be able to help. So if all of those things come and come together, the goal is to not have to increase rates. And then again, at the end of the day, it may be that we just have to, you know, move right beginning from, uh, Department of the Hospital. And maybe we all have to chip in, you know, to, to make it work. So, you know, again, that's, that's not what we want to do.
Have you gotten any replies back on the businesses you approached?
We've gotten two. A few donations.
Like five, two?
So many, four.
Four?
Four. Yeah, I just got two more tonight.
Are you talking about one time deal, Mike, or?
Yeah, cause it's gonna take a year to try to figure stuff out.
That's, that's also part of the strategic plan. Cause we need, it's all about partnership and working together because it is a critical service to have. And we, we know we lose people taking jobs because there's no spaces. So that's then part of the conversation too, is just the wide support from businesses. Cause a lot of communities will ask for multi-year pledges from businesses. I mean, it's just, it's just a reality, you know? Breaking even is considered a good thing. Most daycares just don't. It's a hard formula. So that's just part of, part of the plan again, that will be presented next Tuesday.
Well, what, what would be information on what is, what is the average? What other daycares, we are, are we gonna be in line or are we gonna be out of line?
For the rate?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about, I mean, that's part of all of what First Children's Finance, you know, they're the experts in that. I couldn't rattle off that, that info myself, but.
Did my motion get support?
Yeah.
I guess we're in a process of, I'm not prepared to support that motion at this point. It's not a no, it's a not yet. I would like a better picture than, hey, the, you know, I wanted to sign larger donation this year with the idea that, okay, we're gonna partner for a few years. I want it to be part of a, a bigger, more clear picture than saying yesterday.
Yeah, sure. I would agree with that. Sure. I mean, the motion gives us time to look at and come up with a plan.
And I'm not saying I can't support that, that those dollars at one time in this year. I'm just not ready to vote that, you know, favors that right here today. So I'm glad we're welcome in the discussion for consideration of that.
I would be. What information can you provide?
I think the, I have the presentation coming at the end of the month. To me, that's gonna be important.
And that's why we all, you know.
Make sure here as well.
That would give you a much broader view of where we wanna be going forward with that strategic plan.
I mean, it's all gonna be in as part of the, the presentation at noon, which you've been invited to. If you can't make that, six P M at the high school, another reminder going out later today. Um, it's just, we can't share every little bit, but it's just getting started. Here's some key, key points, especially the market study, um, and some of the steps.
I don't think I can be there, but just to take my thoughts.
He'll be there. Yeah, it's just, it's just the first opportunity.
I've seen a few of the last year's budgets for it solely. I, I appreciate it.
And, uh, would you like?
I have, um, next month's agenda. I mean, these guys probably want something sooner than later, don't they?
And we can have it in the next year.
In part, if under the efforts are ongoing, the private sector gets into fifty thousand. I'm content with not saying the public or the county has to throw that money in. But I'm not saying we can't or won't. So.
Well, you know, my thought. So who, who should I contact to, are you gonna call for a board or not?
Oh.
Cause we had a first meeting, a second.
Hi, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those in favor, same side?
Hi.
Hi. All those abstaining?
I'm very upset.
So we're deadlocked. So. So it, it'll be at the next meeting. You guys also got four hundred thousand from Wilkes, did you, yeah?
From what?
From the Wilkes brothers. They donated four hundred thousand to the hospital.
Yes, yep.
Did any of that go to the daycare?
Um, the hospital sustained, uh, some significant financial losses and so used for operations.
Well, if you could kinda see where some of that PPP money went, I'd, I'd like to know what the daycare should have gotten. I don't know how you guys formulated it since you're one entity, but that should have picked up a lot of what you lost in twenty. There should, really shouldn't be anything there. And I'm just comparing what other daycares got the, that money. So, uh, yeah, you wanna give that information to Sheila? Cause she's been filling in here for a while for the auditor. Um, um, financials that she's requested and whatnot. And just give it to Sheila and she will disperse it out to the rest of us. And I'm assuming there's a line item in there for money that you collected from grants and other funding like the DHS money and all that will show up somewhere in there. Does that go over the hospital too, or?
Well, no, it's, it's a separate cop center that, it, so it would just be, it would be revenue, um, for the, for the daycare. So in that cop center. So anything that, anything that goes to the daycare is specific to the daycare, um, the PPP will have to, I need to look at.
Yeah, cause I think you guys did a fine work of this, this, that's our plan. Money, I wish you would have asked her a little bit more, but it's only eighteen hundred bucks. And then I think we had Sue Ann, I don't remember what else that, that dispersed that funding. But that was for improvements to building park that coves and all that kind of stuff. I know we handed out a lot more larger amounts than that. So I mean, if you guys are in that kind of need, it would have been cool of you to have some of that money. But you already submitted it. Got some.
Do you have a waiting list now or not?
Yeah.
So if you lost it, are you gonna have to, you'll put it back in?
Um, so it's still a few that we lost, my, 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 my room is the biggest waiting list. So I just, I got this one covered.
Hospital emergency needs this year.
Uh, July, June, January.
Cool. Thanks for coming, guys. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, please feel free to reach out if you need to do more information or.
You got a lot of grandkids in there. Are you chipping that? Yeah, I hope you would class the actions out of it. That needs to be closed.
It's real. I do think it needs to be closed until this point. I have a motion to hold it close. For the motion?
Mr. Edwards?
Hi.
Mr. Randolph?
Hi.
Mr. DeBoer? I want, hi, Mr. Shelton, about the facilities. So I guess we will, how much closed session? You? Possible action concerning the change of reality, possible closed session. Um, need to be open or closed?
Oh, we've got their report, what they're doing now. And what they provided would be open session. And even in light of that, I guess, I don't know what our attorney might have course his options, but.
Yeah.
Even in light of what they provided, I'd be inclined to send notice to the railroad company or the landowner that they're currently violating hazardous material postings and zoning ordinances. And a, an interaction penalty would be started on September fifteenth or.
Cause they ran it around from the landowner.
I, yeah, that'd be my guess.
So that he would be the one that would be responsible for the materials, right?
Well, not really. They're directly accountable. Is that something we can direct you to send as a notice to them? Or would you prefer closed session? Is there other options?
Um, both. I, if you want to direct me to send the notice and if you wanna send me the information in the background on what you plan and do what you would like to do, I could send that notice. I don't think we need to go into closed session if you direct me to do that. But I would like to go into closed session and talk about our options if this is contemplated imminent litigation. I would prefer the strategic ability to discuss this in closed session.
I guess my thought would be just, there's already, to me, they're in violation of zoning and have, you know, a concern for a D M. I'd start with that versus litigation. But if you would like to advise us of other options, we'll support you when we pursue that.
I, I think they're gonna take the zoning, uh, approach. And I can tell you guys about what the other options are, but I, I'm happy to, to send that note, that notice regarding the violation of zoning, uh, code or zoning regulations and, and finally doing that without any closed session discussion.
Cause we have to start with that stuff anyway. So I guess see how that.
I think so. I don't know what he may say, but.
I'm, I'm content with that.
Thank you. Okay, I'll make it early to do that.
Motion or to direct the attorney to?
Sure.
Send the, the negative motion, directing the county attorney to notify the landowner and the railroad owner of the violations. It's September fifteenth the date that we would identify this.
Yeah, we did.
That's three months after it happened pretty much.
Yep.
Four, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those in favor, same side?
Hi.
Who's in care?
And who's gonna send me the, the notice and the information on, from any, uh?
The zoning?
So that'd be the assessor or, um, and.
Interup.
Okay.
Were they on, like, you know, what? Yeah, okay. Since they're not having closed, so.
Okay, I can do that.
They consider any type of zoning penalties. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't really industrial.
Yeah.
So, uh, so, uh, I don't think.
I found, I think that might be way to get them to go.
That's still wanna come up in Nashville?
Oh, yeah. And did we wanna talk briefly about what the other options are here, the strategic on a closed session here?
I guess about revealing much of what I would describe as a closed session, I, off this couch and saying, for now, I think that your action sending this up to the letter is probably the best action to save this time.
Yeah, I wouldn't have probably made the most, because I thought there was, you know, this is my first step, but that's the way.
No, and I can communicate to you guys more precisely what my thoughts are on this, and I don't believe a meeting at this time required on that, so I'll just say that. You gentlemen, have a good day.
Thanks. Well, Sheila. Do you have any more information for us?
No, but can you sort of sign the place for like the three meters, couple, three of them?
Oh, not for.
In, in other business, you, you may notice that some of these windows are missing latches, and they shipped us a bunch of windows, made up of latches. So the contractor is working at securing those latches to put them in a way that needs. But I know there's one here, there's one upstairs, there's one over in that open room there, by where your coffee machine and stuff's at, I don't know how, maybe they got paid on a bribe here, so, I don't know. Yeah, morning, morning. There is no latches, but they are coming. I don't have anything for the media report, anybody else? Economic development?
No, we got a meeting, we.
Anything else you guys wanna have on the next agenda, possibly your line at the moment?
So the beginnings will be all that September. So can I ask how much time is gonna take to get the information?
A couple keys, though, because it shouldn't be that hard, just a caution to the line. Um, for future, future agenda items, we will be meeting online at nine o'clock for potential interview.
Not, not eight o'clock.
Not eight o'clock, at nine o'clock. So everybody would like to pencil out into their calendars for next week?
She really can call me again.
Nobody called me.
We figured, if you weren't on your way, you were gonna listen in.
Yeah.
We have an engineer.
Nope.
Well, that's a good question, I saw that.
Yeah.
Sent out, but we have an agreement with O'Brian County, not with an individual engineer, so.
I don't.
To me, we would need to hear from O'Brian County, because that's.
If he doesn't show up.
I, I'm hoping that we have a satisfactory answer, and.
I, I have to.
With P E.
Yeah. January.
January, I mean, so we might be without for a couple of days.
We've been talking before for a few.
Everybody down there is pretty good about running the program at this point. There's even pros down there, engineers, but.
I think we should, uh, talk about too, because, uh, O'Brogge's one, I'm sure he'll be retiring in three, four years. Is there, I don't know, I don't know if I'll work this right, but the engineers are just graduating, using their, their intro, then they can get their time under a P E. And maybe we'll have to change in five years, or four years, whatever it is, because that's fine. But that's a way to, we should look at, uh, start something like that.
Until they're ready to.
Yeah. And at least when they have their education as an engineer, they should know what.
I should be, uh, looking for that. He doesn't have to have a P E, though.
But I have, uh. It's a degree program, anyway.
Got, yeah, I'm sort of not a master.
That's why I think, you know, even if we just train somebody in four or five years. And there's one company out there, you know, something like that, they do that, and they've got two, you said, they're just saying, they don't need.
Now, if we can start recruiting young kids.
Yeah.
Right out. Oh, with candy?
Then we don't have to have a P E, and they get their education at the P E.
Not if they move on to another game, bring in another kid.
Yeah. But we're getting our jobs filled, we're being there now. But I think it's just something to think about, if they wanna do it, or if you don't wanna do it, or.
Well, I think that all wraps that up, and we'll see what happens, something else on the side. That it?
That everybody has.
Alright.
The day.
I'm bored.
Are we able to move that busted pole up front, just here, where we sit?
Yeah.
Kind of an eyesore, it's just all bent broken, wires hanging out of top of it, do we need it? That one are outside the door? It's every time, the fence right up my height for sure.
Morning.
How are you?
Good, are you okay?
Guys, you take a lot of money, hell, it's going today.
You got a new face for ya?
Uh-oh.
New form on your guy, apparently with patients in county on the home, but this is special tech.
Did I quit it?
Now we have some vacation, but Spencer's gonna be working on, uh, mostly working on J D three, so we figured to take a pic, introduce you guys.
Uh, obviously, I see everything, I see that we should go with Jermaine.
You're right.
Oh, in favor of Jermaine? All those opposed, same side, we're meeting in Jermaine.